He called him Honest Gruber. He's from Die Hard, right?
Yeah.
So is that a Christmas movie or not?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
No one ready yet? Get this guy. He's outside the building.
Oh, yeah?
Sure, well. She's had her daughter's on.
Can you hear us? Okay, you guys? Can you hear us?
He's he's dying out.
Can you hear it?
All right, okay, six o'clock.
Okay, I would like to call the June sixth Planning Commission to order. I'm looking for a revised agenda approval. And that revision is I'd like to move old business first and new business after.
So moved.
Second.
Move, is that good? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, those carries. So because I did that, let's do a different. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the May 16th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
opposed? Carries. We are now into public comments. Is there?
I don't see anybody virtually on Zoom, but if there happens to be anybody that would like to make comment to the Planning Commission that is on Zoom, this is the opportunity to do that. You can use the raise hand function of the webinar and we can go ahead and bring you in and provide your comments, so. Going once, going twice.
We have somebody here.
Yep, I don't see anybody. We do have a member of the audience. I don't know if they'd like to give comments to the Plan Commission or not.
Yes.
Did you, did we have a sign in?
No, if they just want to come maybe to the table next to you so we can pick you up on the microphone here and then introduce yourself.
Yeah, you didn't say.
All right, thank you for having me. My name is Laura Henderson and just a Lacey homeowner. So I came, I hope I'm in the right place. I haven't made it to a city council meeting, but I was bringing up the question. I wanted to talk about the mushroom farm property. And my first question would be, is it true that the city of Lacey owns this property?
Grant, would you like to provide any information? I know that we've had some pre-submission conferences and other development applications, so.
Yeah, we can. This is really isn't. Got it?
We'll get him.
There? Can you hear me now? Yes, no?
We can't hear you. Right now.
Testing, testing? All right. That happened at the council meeting the other night, too. We can, but it's probably would be easier and more complete if we could just connect up tomorrow sometime, including with some of our planners who have met with folks over the over the time period. The mushroom farm is not owned by the by the city and there's been a number of development proposals for it. But the planners would have all the information on that if you wanted to do a deep dive.
So I'm not savvy to everything, but when I looked on the assessor's website, it says that the city of Lacey owns it.
No. You're talking about Ostroms?
Yeah.
No.
So is that website incorrect?
I I don't know what you were looking at or whose site it was.
I've just pulled up, I just know I've pulled up just, you know, the address of the mushroom farm and then typed it into the assessors. I definitely could be wrong, but.
The property across the street, so. Yeah, so we purchased some property a while back. I actually brought up a map here so we can we can look at it. And I'll share my screen, Grant, so you can see this as well. Where are we at? We're too far. You guys see that? Okay?
Yeah.
So this is the mushroom farm properties Marvin Road and Silicon on the northeastern corner, so click on that. So it brings up the information. So the owner of the mushroom farm is Ostroms. They own, I think then they also own this property, property to the east as well. I believe the this information here is this parcel here.
Yep.
Three twenty-three, yeah, it is still eighty-three. So we purchased this property back in two thousand and six from Ostroms. So this is the property that, so this is the the Rack Regional Athletic Complex, which is just south of Ostroms. This is a piece property that people, it's like a gravel lot that people park in at the Rack. That's what this property is here, so. But yeah, Grant's correct. We don't we don't own any property on the north side of the street.
There, there is an application pending on the city site to develop it as a regular parking lot for the Rack.
Correct. This this piece property here is proposed to be paved and that kind of be improved to be, you know, a proper parking lot.
And and this actually was not spurred actually by the arson. It was actually, I was questioning this like months ago, just in general, the appearance of it, obviously the issues with the vandalism and the vagrants and the everything that's going on there. And I was actually already wondering what the city can do about this. And, you know, forcing the the owner to do anything about it. And that's when I looked it up and I was like, oh, it's the city of Lacey that owns it. I'm incorrect, but my question still was, what can the city or, yeah, can they do to pressure this property owner?
Well, we've been working with him through our nuisance ordinance and with our police department through public safety aspects to do what we can to keep the property fenced off and and safe. Anything, actually, you know, we've done everything we can legally at this point. And we we are issuing an abatement order for the for the burned part, which or the central portion of the building, which is a building safety issue at this point and working with the property owner and the state air quality agency to get the permits in place to tear that part down.
Okay, all right. Well, I definitely understand there are abandoned buildings, buildings all over the state of Washington. I was just hoping that we could put some pressure on them to do something considering we have the Rack right across the street and it just does not look good for our city at all.
Then then everything up to that we can under the current nuisance codes. The good news is that we've got, we've received the application to redevelop the property, so that's in process.
All right, okay. Well, thank you for your time. That was it.
Thanks for coming. Okay, nobody else online there, right, Ryan?
Nope, I think we're good to go.
Okay. Reports of commissioners.
No, I just, I did get that. The dot on the Niskuale area, so I started looking at that website and seeing if there was some information. I haven't finished looking through it. It looked like it had a lot of information, but I thought that was going to be a pretty cool thing that they sent out as a postcard and trying to get some input on it. So wanted to look at it a little more deeply because a cursory glance was just not enough, so.
And and people don't, I'm sure we all know what she's talking about. That is a really important thing to give feedback on. It's it's the future of Thurston County, that whole, you know, that whole gateway into Thurston County has some serious issues.
So I felt it deserved more than my ten or fifteen minutes of a quick glance. I felt it deserved a little more of a thorough review, so that's my.
This is online right now?
We sent out big postcards.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Inviting comments, yeah.
That was my hot topic, too. I'm thrilled about that.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Nothing to add. I I just second how important it is for everyone to use their voice in this in this matter, yeah.
Nor Woods.
Other than your your bicycling.
I hope to get back on the bike this weekend.
All right. Ryan?
I'm gonna turn it over to Grant to start with the department report and then I'll take over after after that.
Thank you. Just a couple things in process. The we've been working all along with the our regional partners to help the right away initiative, which the state is funding to remove homeless encampments from the state right away. That was what funded ultimately the Maple Court, which is the old days, and that money. But the work leading up to that purchase was was led by the city and we had actually gone down that path. Thankfully, the state money was able to purchase it, you know, sooner without city investment. The the structure is getting close to being converted to right now in enhanced shelter and ultimately it'll include trans transitional housing. The the open date was originally, I think it was reported in the some of the newspapers or local media, that it'd be July, June nineteenth. That was the original one that slipped a little bit and is to be determined based on some fire sprinkler issues that they ran into. The once that is opened and the Franz Anderson Tiny Home Village in Olympia off Franz Anderson Road, tiny shelter village, excuse me. The the state's plan is to start removing people from the Slater Kenny Camp first and relocate them or offer them housing services in those two facilities. They've been moving people into Unity Commons as beds have become available. This morning, it was reported out that there's a hundred and seventy-seven people who have been in the camp at one point or another and the service providers have their names on the list for for housing, which is more than we will have available. The the providers believe that they'll be able to place around ten people a week into Maple Court once that gets started and it's available. So it'll be a, you know, an all-summer kind of kind of activity to to clean up the site permanently. And then, as in some of the other right away encampments that have been cleared, this State Patrol would go in and trespass anybody else who who moved in to the state right away. So the the focus of the right away dollars is to get people out of the right way in in the encampments. So I just wanted to to kind of brief you on where we're at on that because we're starting to get a lot of criminal activity and other other issues surrounding the Slater Kenny Camp and including, you know, emails and letters to the city manager. And our part of our response and just want to make sure the Plan Commission has this information as you talk to people in the community. That property is not within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Lacey. It's in the city of Olympia. So we are not the lead entity working with the state on managing or cleaning up the camp. But we we understand our businesses and residents are impacted by some of the activities that are surrounding it. So and again, we we meet work weekly with the the partnership and monitor, you know, the the status of of getting that that issue resolved and getting people into the into the system to hopefully move them out of that living situation and ultimately into, you know, hopefully market rate housing and which is ties well with with some of the information you're going to get later tonight on the work that Gordon's done on one aspect of the affordable housing pantheon in in Lacey. The other report out I wanted to give was just that it's been really busy on the construction front here lately. We were getting a lot of applications in for for structures, large structures, multifamily type structures in order to vest under the current energy code, which was established to change July first. So we've been, Terry's been and the whole building crew have been working their fingers to the bone typing away on their digital plan review and are keeping up and actually got a lot of those plans out. And then the state moved the adoption date back to October twenty-ninth, which gives us all a little breathing space and hopefully we don't have to have another wave come in at that time. But just kudos to the team for keeping up with everything under a lot of paper coming in to to take a look at. And along those same lines, I pulled a number of multifamily units in some form of approval process, either under construction or just in the planning phase for for Rick the other day. And it was twenty, just over twenty-four hundred units of multifamily are in the pipeline. That is my report.
Couple things. One is first of all, introduce Erin. So we have Erin Skelly, our new permit technician. So as I think I mentioned at our last meeting, Sarah got a promotion a while ago and is now an assistant planner working on current planning projects, which left a vacancy at our our front counter with our permit tech position. And Erin comes to us from our utility billing section. So she's a existing city employee that has transferred departments and we're really happy to to have her here now and started to bring her up to speed on how to run a planning commission meeting and and she's off and running, so welcome, Erin.
Welcome. Thank you.
And then the other item I wanted to mention, I'm going to share my screen. Is a pending annexation that's started moving forward. So I wanted to, if you can see, you know, pull this back just a little bit, make the screen a little bit bigger, is this is on Fifteenth Avenue Northeast, so this is Slater Kenny Road on the west, Carpenter Road on the east, Fifteenth Avenue turns into to Dram Road and then eventually Britton Parkway. On the south side are the, I can never remember the name of the apartment complex, Madera Apartments. Could be the Nouvelle Apartments, I don't know.
It's been about seven or eight different names, so.
And you can see those from the freeway when you drive by. This is actually on the north side of Fifteenth Avenue Northeast and and would be essentially these properties here have applied for annexation. They're property that are owned by a group of children, heirs of a family that are, the property is being developed for multifamily. They're they're selling it and as a condition of their approval, they're required to annex because the property immediately is contiguous to our municipal boundary. But one thing I wanted to point out was that this could be part of a potential larger annexation because it does create a bit of an unincorporated island. That's not a good layer to use. Jurisdiction, there we go. So our city limits are this green area on this map here. So this is actually Cujo Park that that comes down off Carpenter Road and comes to the south here. So the properties that I pointed out earlier kind of would be right here and would create essentially, if this was annexed, it would create an unincorporated island. So this this part here that's not shaded green is is unincorporated urban growth area. So with this annexation, if it was to continue this kind of dogleg and be come down to Fifteenth Avenue, it would create this donut hole. So I believe the approach will most likely be using the unincorporated island method of annexation. So this is something that the council will have to consider, but it would take in property essentially from from here east past Carpenter Road. So this is Woodland Creek Estates, some larger kind of lots in here. People are aware of kind of like, this is the Blueberry Farm that's on Carpenter Road on your right-hand side. They always have like bird barrels for sale. That's that's that property there. So very preliminary stages, we just either yesterday or the day, yeah, yesterday, because the day before was Sunday, yesterday. We got an application for for that, so that'll move through the council process a little bit.
Brian, while you've got that map up, do you want to talk about the Cujo Park boundary adjustment?
I did at the last.
Oh, perfect, okay.
I'll point it out just because we have it up, so. As we, I think we mentioned at the last meeting, we moved forward with an application to bring in the northern portion of Cujo Park into the urban growth area with hopes of eventually annex it into the city to eliminate some boundary confusion issues as well as some potential issues with calls for service in the park and permitting within the park. So it's essentially this area to the north that's unshaded. That meeting was held yesterday. So the way it works is there's a subcommittee of Thurston Regional Planning Council that considers these and they make a recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners. That subcommittee has recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. So positive movement forward in the first step and getting that added to the urban growth area. From there, it'll go to the county commissioners. They'll hold a public hearing and make a formal decision. If that's, you know, if that's an affirmative decision, then we we will get then with the wheels in motion towards annexation. So we bring that all into the city.
Thank you, Ryan.
So any questions on anything in the department report?
Okay, so we will move on to our revised, we'll start with old business first with neighborhood commercial update from Hans.
Everyone, and thanks for moving the agenda around a little bit. I just have a couple of quick updates, so it won't take too much time. But I wanted to share a little bit about where we're at with the neighborhood commercial update process. We've fully concluded our initial community outreach that included kind of an awareness campaign and survey. We presented on some of those topics and all of that information has been uploaded to our project page that covers all of that content. But more recently, we've been working with all of the businesses that are located within our neighborhood commercial districts to get some feedback on what's working out there, what's not, and maybe some recommendations on really what it takes to succeed as a business within one of these districts. I went out with Wesley, our economic development coordinator. We actually went door to door within each one of these districts. We counted thirty different, thirty-six different businesses in total and we were actually able to have a conversation with thirty-one of them as part of this process. So some of that was just an initial contact, a little bit of an introduction to our department and what we're all about, some business-related resources that are out there, and then this update process and opportunities and ways to get involved and provide feedback. And then as part of that, we followed up on two separate occasions via email with additional information and then links to a business-specific survey that was kind of more targeted at kind of what the operational side of things looks like and getting feedback on that front. In total, we had fifteen of those businesses respond. It's not a huge number, but of the total, it's forty-two percent of the the total that are out there, so we do feel pretty good about that. Still going through the feedback as far as what's what was provided within that at a high level. Majority of the feedback has been experience or site-specific, so it kind of lends itself or supports the idea that these districts are, each one of these districts is relatively unique and kind of more of a nuanced or flexible approach. Maybe a popular alternative within the business community and something that may be worth looking at and moving forward. Other common themes within the feedback that I've been able to see so far is less regulation. And what that translates to is setbacks, height, access, uses, things like that. I'll have more details on exactly what that's all about, but at kind of a high level, that's that's been a theme, even though it's a little bit different location to location, that's been something that's been echoed throughout the feedback from the business side of things. And then as far as next steps, within both the community survey and then the business survey, we asked for, within those questions we asked, one of them was, for example, districts. And we wanted that because that's sometimes easier for folks to identify other locations or examples that they would like to see our districts aspire to be, instead of kind of going into the code side of things. So we got really healthy response rate within that question. And now we're going through those example districts and other communities and kind of doing a code audit, if you will, and figuring out what elements in there we might be able to borrow or translate into the Lacey neighborhood commercial districts. And then upcoming on the twenty-eighth of this month, we're actually going to be holding our next open house in the in City Hall. So where you guys are at right now. And that's going to include kind of providing the content that we've received back to the community. So kind of a confirmation session that what we've heard is actually really what folks are trying to convey. So making sure that we're hearing folks correctly and that we're on the right track. And then the second part of that is going into more of a deep dive on those example districts and looking a little bit our neighborhood commercial district code itself and figuring out what kind of code changes might make sense. And that could include things like, you know, looking at streetscapes or different types of uses or design elements, things like that. But really trying to figure out what these districts can look like through kind of a Lacey-specific lens, if you will. And that's coming up on the twenty-eighth, and that's that's where we're at today. So, yeah, I don't know if there's any questions, but that's all I have for you.
A couple of questions. What businesses did you talk to in that? Are these businesses that are adjacent to these or some that are already in neighborhood commercial districts?
Yep, so these are businesses that are already located within these neighborhood commercial districts. Some of them are vacant and currently undeveloped, but the ones that are actually do have, there's a total of thirty-six different active businesses that are currently operating within these districts. So those are the ones that we went door to door to, dropped off flyers, provided some informational content and then also gave our business cards and ways to get and get involved.
So they indicated they wanted less regulation, but they already have like then established businesses, established buildings. What do you think was was, did they feel there were barriers getting to that place and they want less regulation for future businesses? Or what do you think was motivating those comments? And obviously, it's very different than what the public was wanting with, they wanted more regulation. So obviously, we'd have to marry those very bipolar differences, but but I'm kind of curious as to what the foundation of why they were saying less regulation.
For sure. And one thing that I should note in here is that some of the feedback that we got from is also property owners. So we did also reach out to some of the owners of the undeveloped sites, so some of that is echoed there as well. But and I am still reading through these comments and we will produce a summary report after I get through all of it. But things like access was a big one, that kind of how how you come into and out of a neighborhood commercial district. Some of those are limited as far as what roads you're allowed to access, these just districts off of. But that was one that was echoed a few times. But I will note that each comment that we received from the businesses was very specific to their own experiences and wasn't kind of a broad brush of neighborhood commercial districts in general. So trying to figure out what those comments are and how they might apply in a more general sense to these districts versus their own kind of one-off experience of an instance. And then some of the comments are, I don't know, I don't want to call them just kind of the the knee-jerk payment reaction that businesses kind of provide, but some of the time, just, you know, more space to kind of operate how they wish to. It's kind of the theme that I think that we see in there, and that's kind of where that less regulation is coming from. Not necessarily specific to moving or changing how they operate, just kind of more freedom to kind of do what they wish.
Anybody have any more questions? Okay, on, you're off the hook now.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Additional old business, so we will move on to new business and manufactured home park preservation with Jennifer Adams, Housing Coordinator, and Gordon Gimsy, Planning Intern.
So I'll just start off really quickly and introduce Jennifer. So we have Jennifer Adams here, our new housing coordinator. Jennifer's been here for a little bit more than a month. Came to us by way of Calitz County, where she was a planner there and also has a background in real estate and is getting a master's degree in. what is it, urban plan? So, so we're really excited to have Jennifer join us and she's been doing a fantastic job since she's got here. It's been such a great resource to, to have somebody working on, a hundred percent working on housing stuff now. Because I think as, you know, especially the long-term members know that we've kind of been sharing those duties for a long time and trying to, you know, plug our finger into that, you know, that gap in the dyke for quite a while. So, so yeah, welcome Jennifer. And then we also have Gordon Gimsey. Gordon is our intern, but calling Gordon an intern is a little bit of a disservice to Gordon. Gordon is an active-duty member of the military. He's soon to be retired coming up in September. He is part of a program that's called Hiring Our Heroes, which in the last six months of active duty, exiting members of the military are able to get civilian experience. And it's a win-win program because for us, we get Gordon and get Gordon's expertise, but yet we don't have to pay for him. So he still gets his, gets his salary paid for by the, by the military. So the federal government pays for Gordon. So, so Gordon is here in the next about ten days, he'll, he'll be done with his program. And so we, we've really enjoyed having Gordon here the last two, three months. You may remember, so a couple of years ago, this all, the, the kind of analysis of our mobile manufactured home parks began with a request by the mobile home park on Yelm Highway, Mountain Green Mobile Home Park that wanted to look at a potential rezone to establish a new zone for mobile home or manufactured home parks. So they would only be exclusively ever be able to be manufactured home parks. And the council at that point, I think that was brought to the joint meeting, the council said, well, we didn't really have the staff for the time to be able to look at that. So we pushed that forward and, and this year, we knew we were going to have some more resources to be able to look at this. And so with Jennifer and Gordon coming on board, we've been actually able to do a little bit of an analysis, which we explained tonight on kind of a path forward. So as part of this, rezoning will certainly be some options, but there are some other tools in the toolbox that we might be able to use that don't, may not necessarily be totally about rezoning all parks across the city. So the purpose of tonight's briefing is, is really to, you know, go into a little bit more detail about what those options are. Look at the housing stock and the condition that, that we have in Lacey. Look at the alternatives and kind of provide a little bit of an opportunity for the planning commission to discuss options moving forward. This will also go forward to the, to the council, but you know, this is obviously with somebody in the planning commission has a lot of experience in and brings a lot of weight to, so we want to make sure that the planning commission has the ability to provide the recommendation before it does go to council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer to start her presentation. I'll just share screen and click and just point to me when you're ready.
Point. Thank you so much for the introduction, Ryan. It's nice to be here. This is my first time presenting. As Ryan mentioned, just, just started the city of Lacey. Very pleased to be here. So I've got some information that I've put together tonight. I'm just going to go ahead and read from my slides this evening. So probably about ten minutes of your time. This is kind of a pre-introduction to Gordon, who's going to have the meat and potatoes of tonight's discussion material. But I just thought we could get our mindset into the conversation with a little bit of context. So thanks again for your time. Also, if you can't hear me, please let me know, okay? Appreciate it. All right. As you may be aware, efforts need to be made to preserve our local manufactured home parks in both the city boundaries of Lacey and in the urban growth area. You will learn this evening from my colleague and intern planner Gordon Gimsey that twenty-eight manufactured parks represent housing for an estimated forty-one hundred people in our community. Through Gordon's research, you may also find that some of your questions and concerns about how the city could approach the task of preservation will be answered. Gordon will be presenting his findings of fact and some reasonable assumptions as well as potential courses of action to be considered as viable steps in the direction of preservation. Though no one strategy will offer a complete solution, you will hear about options that are proving success in Washington State and other regions. Among these strategies is the for, is the forming of resident-owned communities, also referred to as cooperatives. For context, we need to first recall the reasons for this research and the charge of manufactured home preservation efforts. It is important to note that though encouraging development of new parks in support of this critical middle rung of housing presentations this evening will be focused only on possible solutions to maintain our existing parks. Development of new parks should also be studied in the near future. While many people, including urban planners and affordable housing researchers across markets, see manufactured home parks as potential problems, we are charged with seeing these parks as part of the solution to the current housing crisis that millions of Americans and even locally here in Lacey are facing. Though the purpose of this contextual, contextual review is not to affirm the energy efficiency federal safety standards adopted in nineteen, in nineteen seventy-six or discussions on the viability of these homes being placed or relocated, it is important to acknowledge some common stereotypes and look to achieving a new perspective. And I'm going to refer to them as MHPs probably from now on. Where MHPs have historically been viewed as poorly built, substandard, low density, detached from appropriate services and community, the subject to exploitation by park owners, we need to look at the positive impacts of MHPs as part of the necessary and local housing stock. It is clear that manufactured home parks face threats, and you will be hearing about this tonight. Leaving their residents vulnerable to unpredictable rent raises and even park closure should a park be sold for a different land use, such as multiplexes, high-end housing, or even commercial use in some circumstances. Next slide. Thanks, Ryan. So how prevalent are MHPs? Recent research published by the American Planning Association finds there are more than forty thousand manufactured home parks in the nation, providing housing, housing options for more than twenty million Americans. This number far exceeds the assessed number of those living in various forms of government and nonprofit subsidized housing, according to the U.S. Census Bureau Statistics, published by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Manufactured home parks, or MHPs, represent a middle rung of housing that is critical to overall housing stock. The lower building costs per square foot promote more affordable options for many people. Though historically viewed as low density, with the current trend toward reurbanization and higher density allotments for developers, it is important to consider that MHPs offer higher density per acre than most single-family homes on land, making MHPs a healthy choice to meet multiple of our housing objectives. Next slide, Ryan. Thank you. So locally, the city of Lacey, along with the urban growth area, has twenty-eight existing MHPs, as shown here on our distribution map. Nine hundred and fifty-five units are located in Lacey's city limits with eight hundred and eighty-three in the UGA, totaling eight hundred and thirty-eight units and an estimated forty-one hundred residents. So what guides the city toward identifying possible strategies for MHP preservation? Next slide, please. As a city that plans under Washington State's Growth Management Act, we are charged to follow guiding principles found in the state's RCWs. It is helpful to highlight language used in state mandates that are relevant to the discussion that we are having this evening, specific to, to the MHPs in our city. Among language that we should be cognizant of, we find charges to promote housing affordable to all income level, the income levels, encourage to preserve existing housing stock, which undoubtedly includes our MHPs, make adequate provisions for the needs of citizens in all economic segments of the community, identify barriers that restrict equal access to housing for all, address issues such as displacement and policies that incite exclusionary practices. We also must address disinvestment, which the state notes as a common practice among park owners who may fail to maintain park conditions and infrastructure, and identify areas that may be at a higher risk of displacement from the forces of new development and/or policy decisions that impact zoning and land use. Next slide, please. Thank you. What does Lacey's Housing Action Plan say? In response to the GMA guidelines for planning specific to housing, the city has included in its Housing Action Plan some statements of intent, including allowing manufactured homes in multifamily and commercial areas, recognition that MHPs serve one of the most affordable housing options for households in the region, establish a program to preserve and maintain healthy and viable MHPs, consider rezoning current MHPs to protect the use in perpetuity, and amend the Manufactured Mobile Home Landlord Tenet Act to provide protections for tenants in the event of a sale. Next slide, please. You will learn about possible strategies for communities and local government to consider as park preservation efforts. In Gross to Second Substitute Senate Bill Fifty-One Ninety-Eight was recently passed and will be in effect as of July twenty-third this year, twenty-twenty-three. This bill requires that should a manufactured home park go up for sale or receive an offer for purchase, the current park owner must give the park residents collectively the first right to purchase or the first right of refusal. The landlord must notify all park residents, in addition to multiple agencies, within fourteen days after, after the property going up for sale. Notice of park closure or conversion to higher use shall require two years, unless subject to special situations specified in the bill. If park residents decide to purchase, they have seventy days to notify the owner of their intent to purchase and identify representation for the purchase and the negotiations. And next slide, Ryan. Thank you. So recently trending nationwide and gaining popularity here in Washington State is the concept of resident-owned communities, or ROCs, also known there again as MHP co-ops. Under this model, agencies such as Rock USA partner with many nonprofit agencies to facilitate the resident purchase of a park. This may involve using banks that offer very low-interest loans, grant monies from various sources, and even Rock USA's own capital. Agencies such as Rock USA will continue then to provide technical service and education for the new resident owners for a period of ten years. The graph on the right depicts lot fee increases over a thirty-year period, indicating that monthly space rent for ROCs holds very constant over time as compared to non-resident-owned parks that increase rents on average in this nation at three point nine percent per year. Rock USA claims to hold their annual lot increases at zero point nine percent, which is a considerable difference. Regarding these figures, it is good to point out that the three point nine percent average rent increases seen in the non-ROCs is well below what many parks are experiencing. And in fact, here in Lacey, we have had residents report yearly space rent increases of up to nine percent. Next slide, please. So how successful are co-ops? Well, according to research and discussions with lead consultants at our local affiliate of Rock USA, which is Rock Northwest, which serves Washington and Idaho, all ROCs formed to this point are proving success and meeting program goals that empower residents as community owners to understand their rights and their responsibilities. Reserve accounts are often initiated for park repairs and often initially funded through the loan structure. Since two thousand and fourteen, Rock USA has successfully facilitated resident-owned communities in the state of Washington. And as you can see here, there are currently twenty-three resident-owned communities, mobile home parks, in our state with several near Lacey, such as in Lakewood, and more recently in Tumwater. So twelve hundred and twenty-seven units have been preserved through this model, which has likely saved parks for an estimated five thousand individuals, families, and seniors. Through this successful model, it may be reasonable to assume that manufactured home park co-ops may equal a path toward affordable housing preservation. Next slide, please. And it is appropriate to consider ways in which the city could assist with the facilitation of resident-owned communities, if this model is found to be a possible option now or in the near future. As we are faced with this decisions, it is helpful to look to precedents to discover what other jurisdictions have done to promote park preservation. In Longmont, Colorado, in two thousand and nineteen, city officials voted unanimously to loan three hundred thousand dollars at zero percent interest over ten years, using money from their Affordable Housing Fund. The objective was to lower the initial purchase price of the park, maintain the space rent over time, and provide initial capital for the park's reserve account. And next slide, please. And then looking even more locally at our, at our neighbor city here, Tumwater. In two thousand and nine, Tumwater passed an ordinance establishing a mobile home park zone district, which has protected mobile home parks from being sold for a different land use. The zoning decision aligned with the objective to preserve, to preserve and improve existing housing stock and conservation of existing communities. More recently, Thunderbird Village MHP successfully formed a resident-owned community. These two measures together have ensured long-term protection for the land that the park is sited on, as well as the stabilization of monthly space rents, as those such decisions now reside with the park members who share ownership and responsibility. And then in conclusion, guiding principles should lead the city's efforts in decision-making, such as development of a mobile home park housing strategy and possible regulatory approaches, to name a few ideas. Though MHPs face valid concerns and potential threats, including park closure, strategies to preserve this critical layer of affordable housing should be thoughtfully considered among the landscape of our decision-making bodies at the local level. Continued efforts will be made by staff that work toward a more thorough understanding of our MHPs and bring the most current information to the conversations. So that's all I had for you this evening, and I will turn it over to Gordon. Thank you.
One second to share the screen one more time, and then I'm going to pass this over to Gordon to get the results of his study.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How's everybody doing? I had an introduction for this, but Ryan already introduced me, so I kind of got to think on my feet a little bit. I'd just like to publicly acknowledge Ryan and the city of Lacey and say thank you for letting me come on and taking me on the team. Really enjoyed it. As an outside set of eyes, looking at the staff, the city staff, you guys should all be very happy with, you know, the work that they're doing, very professional and very good stewards of the city. So I just wanted to make that public announcement, since he took my introduction. So here's the agenda. Typical agenda you see all the time, just an introduction, we'll go through the body of the work and then a conclusion. I ask you, keep your, your questions to the end. You've all seen the, the read ahead, so I'm sure you'll have your questions. Just keep that in mind and at the end, we'll close it up. Just ask what you have. So we'll start here. So when Ryan gave, gave me this, this problem to take a look at, I really had no idea where to start. So I looked through a lot of literature, and what I found was basically five things that affect manufactured home parks, that are stresses on their survival. First is the private equity market entrance. Since two thousand and fifteen, we've seen a big change, more so, not so much in the city, but more so nationally of, of big private equity corporations with vast access to capital. They're able to go in and pay premium prices for these, these properties, and jack the prices up. We're talking, you know, up to thirty percent going up. We have a park, park here in Lacey that is, it's a, an outlier in price, and there, it is owned by a corporation in California. It, it's a nine hundred dollars a month. It's Emerald Greens. It's nine hundred dollars a month, and the second, even closest rent to that, I think it's in the seven, seven fifty range. So it's quite a bit higher. And the, the next is, is the lack of, of new mobile home parks. There's only been one constructed since two thousand and eleven. That is the Lakeview Meadows, the one that's owned by the Treys. Very, very nice park. In fact, I think if you didn't know what you were looking at, you wouldn't even know that it's a manufactured home. Very, very nice. The reason for that basically is there's not a lot of money, not a lot of cash flow you can generate through an MHP. You basically mine the land, that people are putting their homes that they own on there, and you're collecting the rent. You basically mine the land that people are putting their homes that they own on there and you're collecting the rent. And you know, the rent's about, you know, on average, you know, six hundred dollars. So that's not a big cash flow. So the developers are incentivized to do the multifamily homes. They can get a lot more ROI for that for that property. Third on this list, if not, if not the most important is since two thousand and three, housing prices have increased one hundred and seventy-one percent. During that time, household income has gone up sixteen percent. So what you've got is one seventy-one, sixteen. And that's your affordable housing. That's the gap that we're seeing. It's just, it's just unsustainable. And that's I think the importance behind the study is that we're showing that, you know, we can't keep doing business as usual. City's gotta step up and do something. And we'll get into that in the later slides of what my recommendation is. Oh, last one, excuse me, nimbyism. So a lot of people will will speak to the the need for affordable housing. But they don't want to do it in their backyard. Somebody else can take that. It's the same thing if if people are all about, you know, criminal justice and we want more jails. Don't do it in my backyard, put it in theirs. It's the same thing, same kind of thing. So these all affect the manufactured home parks. And so why do they matter? Well, first and foremost is the low costs. You're not gonna find a a better value for your dollar when it comes to a rent. A lot of the the folks that live are blue collar. English might be their their secondary language. They may not even speak English at all. A lot of them have fixed incomes, whether they're retired or medically not unable to work. Also the autonomy. So they value their privacy. They don't have a neighbor that's banging on the wall, you know, they've got some space in between. They've also got some room to have their, you know, their household items, what have you, maybe a couches on the outside. Or whatever it is, they don't they don't have that in an apartment. So that's a value to them as well. And lastly, the sense of community. And a lot of these parks, there's a central meeting hub, whether it's for children, which is a playground. It might be a basketball court or it might be a clubhouse. And they all come from the same background, whether it's their age, whether it's economic, whether it's cultural. There's a park in the UGA, it's not in this study, but the UGA, that's a group of folks from Vietnam. Can't remember what they're called, but they're but they're all from that area. So these parks do have a, you know, a central sense of community that's that's in order. So when I started looking at the problem, I've gotta have a framework to work from. And for me, coming from the military, I work in facts and I work in assumptions. I need to know what's real and what's not, what and what is assumed to be, but could not be. If that makes any sense. Basically, I I've gotta work from knowns and unknowns and build from that. And this is what I came up with my facts. A recent update that Jennifer talked about is is the Senate Bill fifty-one ninety-eight. That was a recent addition. I did hear at the last community, it was the planning commission, somebody asked Ryan when he mentioned that we're gonna do this, how many parks does Lacey have? He didn't know. I was watching, I was going, I know, I know how many there are. Wow, there's twenty-eight. So it's that. And then the assumption is not gonna go into this, but if anybody looked through this and said, I missed something that you think might be pertinent. Please, by all means, come up on the net at the end so I can update some of this word. And here's a a good picture representation of what I'm looking at when I look at assessed condition. Thank you to the economic development lead Wesley Nguyen. I was able to come up with this slide. So basically what you're seeing is wooded village condition of dire. That's what I would look at as being something that's barely, you know, habitable. It's a pretty poor condition. And wooded village, not all the homes are like this. I think it's average of two point five. So you're looking at poor to average condition, but there are homes like that there. And then Ringo Vista, Ringo Vista's got dire ones as well. But that's where I got the poor condition. College Terrace is an average home, you know, you don't see the landscaping isn't that great or whatever. But it's not bad. There's nothing structural wrong with it and the paint job is okay. Edge Lake, another example here of a good condition. And then Lakeview Meadows. Far and away is the nicest one. Again, it's they're modular homes. They're on a foundation, very strict guidelines in there, I would imagine, because they're all immaculate, pretty much. And it's it's fifty-five and over, so they don't have to work most probably, most likely, so they have time to spend on their homes. And then we're starting into the the meat and potatoes of the study. I wanted to get to quantitative variables. I didn't want to rely on, I think, or I feel. I wanted cold hard facts, cold hard data to work from. So what I did was I went out to all the parks and I established how many spaces they had. And then I would find out how much the rent was. And from that, I could deduce their cash flows. I didn't need to know their books because it's all it's all fairly standard. It's gonna deviate, but I would say I've got a ninety to ninety-five percent solution of what their actual cash flow is. And you see that for all the parks there per year. And again, the park condition, that's pretty subjective, but I I lay out what I'm looking at in the previous slide. Property value, that's taken from the Thurston County assessor's site, all pretty standard. And then the financial risk. So that's where some of these, some of the math comes in. And what I'm looking at there basically is I'm taking that assessed value. And dividing that cash flow to see what kind of return investment that owner is getting. What kind of pressure is he under to sell to a developer? That's what I wanted to know. And that's that's the value I had to use to get at that. And then total risk. So total risk is where I take that financial risk and then I put the park condition against it. That gives me an idea of what 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 kind of risk is that property really looking at getting at at being bought or repurposed by a developer. And then what I found was wooded village showed that the highest total risk and Lakeview Meadows was the was the lowest. Okay, so then I started developing COAs on how to preserve these parks. And I came up with three. One was the property taxes for the exclusive exclusive use of these parks. So for example, an owner would agree that I will not sell this property for any other use other than mobile home parks. Or excuse me, manufactured manufactured home parks for the next ten years. And in doing so, the city grants you, you don't pay property taxes on the city portion. Second call was the city purchase of a of a mobile manufactured home park. This was a late addition because my my original version of the code was the right of first refusal. And the state usurped my COA and took it and made it made a law. So I came up with another COA that I hadn't been thinking of. Another COA I hadn't been thinking of, which was the city purchase. So that became COA two. And then COA three was a zoning change. That's one I I honed in on, honed in on pretty, pretty, pretty early. And then found out that it had been done by Tumwater before setting legal precedent. So that's one I definitely wanted to to see how it how it racked and stacked against the other COAs. And then the pros and cons with each one, I'm not gonna go through that. And here was the the now the COA comparison that I did. This is basically a set of our FM five oh. Almost all of the officers do some of this when we do our MDMP Military Decision Making Process, excuse me. I'm still learning not to use acronyms. We all speak in acronym, so it's very difficult for me to use that. But it's a military decision-making process. Basically, it's just problem solving. And but we have regimented process of how we do it. So here, I'm gonna try and walk you through this, how I did it. So you have five criteria, five criteria. You've got cost of city, infringement of rights, how long it's gonna take to implement, how long that COA is gonna last for. And then how does it do for rent stabilization? And each of those criteria have a weight applied to it, like how impactful are they? So for me, duration of effectiveness is the most impactful. It's the most important. We want this COA, whatever we decide to last. We want it to have a meaningful impact for a length of time. So that became a four. It was this is all one to four. So that became a four. And the second most important was the cost of the city. And Ryan might disagree with that. We talked a little bit before. I say, oh, no, that's not that much money, but. I have it there. And then rent stabilization was three. And then the other two infringement of rights and temperament are both on the lower scale of two. So what I did, can I move forward and point the screens over here? Oh, I can use this. So what you see, these three numbers here, one, two, and four, those are the values that I assessed as being most important. So for cost of the city, cost of city for rezoning is almost, it basically zero. You have man-hours and that's it. It's the man-hours and time in front of the commission, but when it comes to money out of pocket, rezoning is basically zero. Whereas as as opposed to city purchase, I have it done as a one because the average cost of a manufactured home park is three point nine million. Which is a big chunk of change, at least to me. So so I took that as being the lowest rated. It's the worst, it's the worst COA for that criteria of cost of the city. So I got a one. So I I take that value of that one, applied by the way, is a three. So that's three, four times two is eight, one times two is two, four times four is sixteen, four times three is twelve. You go across each of those criteria, add them all up, and then the highest number is the winner. And what I came up with was rezoning was the best. And I was actually shocked at how close it actually was between between the city purchase. I thought the city purchase would be the the lowest one, just just, but it actually worked out pretty well. There are some some things there that I didn't capture. Which is the city, I don't think wants to get into the real estate ownership business. Yes, I don't think that's a good, I think that's a detriment. You know, we don't want to be landlords, I don't think. There's ways around that. We could do that where we're not directly involved, whether it's contracted out or what have you for a site manager, but it could be done. And here, getting close to the end here, these are my two recommendations for the rezone. I want to do a limited in scope, not just a broad paintbrush across the board where every property is rezoned. Because there's some zones that frankly, somebody mentioned, I don't know if it was you, Mr. Wasson, that it was a pretty bad area. I I don't know about those. Those are at the end of their life cycle. Let them be. Let market forces take care of it. I mean, I know that's a bad thing to say because our constituents, you know, still deserve, you know, that that level of of care, what have you. But some 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 properties, just they don't need to stay. So I can, wooded village is the highest risk, basically based on its property value, based on its condition. And then the other one was Emerald Park. Now, that's not the high, that's not the fourth highest, it is the fourth highest total risk. However, its financial risk is so high that it it's just, it just, it looks like a very big target to be bought by somebody and have its rent raised. Now, there are two things that we can do. One is the fifty-one ninety-eight that's gonna protect it. Protect those citizens and give them the first chance to buy it. And the second one is if you rezone it. If you rezone it, you get rid of the commercial interest right away. It can't be. It's only one use. Now, that doesn't preclude, you know, that that owner not acting in good faith and jacking up the price to where the only people that could afford it is a capital interest, but. You know, it gives a pretty good protection. So those are my two recommend, my two recommendations to protect. Just gonna conclude by saying I enjoyed doing the study. I went out and got to go boots on the ground, as we say in the military. I got to meet with the citizens. They shared freely with me their concerns. Sometimes they would ask, can you can you lower our rent or can you control our rent? And I was like, I can't do that, you know, would never promise something that the city can't even legally do. But they they were, they were happy that, you know, we took their concerns seriously and that we were looking at ways to help them keep their homes. This is because let's be honest, that between homelessness and not, they're not that far from it, to be honest with you. You see some big families, some big families that live in there, a lot of immigrant families with, you know, seven, eight people live in a single white home. I don't know if that's. Go ahead, ma'am.
I was gonna say, one thing that I can't see from this last chart is when you look at those that are high-risk. That are in the red area there. How many total spaces is that versus the other ones?
That I I'd have to get back to you.
But I'm I'm just wondering if that if it pushes, you know, more, it's it's four or five, I guess.
Oh, I can go back to this. Let me go, let me go back.
Yeah, interesting to know.
Forgot I was driving.
Because that's it, that's that's unknown.
So it's right here. What I did is I used an average of two point five. When I, when I got the number of units, I multiplied by two point five to get the number of people that it would affect.
So I have to go back.
Yeah, I'm not good at public math, so I don't wanna.
I know it's on the one slide. Just wondering if those are highly, because it looks like they're high occupancy areas.
Oh, yeah, you're, I think what you're getting at is the occupancy for those high-risk is gonna be higher than what you'll see down there. You're a hundred percent, you're a hundred percent correct.
So so. So that displacing those or or not doing anything about those because they're in poor condition. Is has an unequal effect on the number of people that are housed.
So that that's something that. That's something that you would, that you definitely can take into consideration as you take, you know, develop what you wanna do. From the options I presented. You know, so you can take into account, for sure.
I was curious how, I think two different parks had applied to our requested support in rezoning. Was that accurate?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Or maybe I'm remembering this wrong. I thought two different parks had reached out to.
Had requested rezoning.
Requested rezoning was.
It was the Mountain Green Mobile Home Park on Yelm Highway was the primary. Yeah, yeah, I think what's driving a lot of that is their their rent is at nine hundred dollars a month right now.
That was the one I spoke to earlier about having an almost nine percent space increase in this past cycle.
And they recently went from fifty-five and over to all ages. I know that's a big concern of them. I mean, I get that. I understand, you know, what their concern is. That's the one that had the shooting like two weeks ago. That's the park that we're talking about. That would never happen before. I don't know many.
But the change of zoning is not necessarily impacting the rent at all. No, you're correct.
You are correct. I mean, you can help me out here, Ryan. It's not, it's not unconstitutional. It's very limited in scope in the ways that we can control rent.
Right, exactly.
Right, right. And what Gordon, Gordon's showing and what this slide shows there. So for example, Mountain Greens, because there is a relatively low. Financial risk and a relatively high cash flow. That park isn't as high a risk of converting because that's actually making that. It's making money. And so what what he's showing is those that have the highest risk are really actually those that we should focus on. The preservation of, you know, rather than spreading the peanut butter so thin across the across the piece of toast, we should, you know, we should really focus on specific ones. And and has put together this really good data that gives us some some guide as far as what what those properties are.
The the law that was sort of the regulation that was done in Tumwater. Sorry, has that been tested legally?
It it's legal precedent has been set. So that that in two thousand and eight, I believe it was when that went through. It went through the courts, arbitration, and it came back as you can't stop it.
And just a little more on that as well. I chose to speak about that one simply because it's the closest to us. But nationally, there's, it's quite prevalent to have manufactured home zone specific. And I would be happy to bring some of that research if if necessary.
Did you have anything else in your, before we move on to someone, make sure that Gordon gets to be able to just finish out and then we can open it up.
Yeah, I just wanted to end with the with the way ahead. So this isn't the end. This is, this is just part of the process. So we're gonna keep going into deeper dives. You know, we're gonna figure out, you know, utilities, more detail on that. Demographics, what's the demographics of each of these areas? It's important to have some information to help guide decisions. Information is never bad. Some of the the metadata, if you will, and some of the and some of this that we need to get. The home ages, Jennifer's already done a lot of work on that. I think she might be complete with that. Because like I said, some of these homes, you can tell are at the end of their life cycle. They're about done, throwing their last legs. Staff study, white paper, I don't know if you guys got a chance to see that too. I can't remember if we sent that out. Okay, good. And then resident outreach. So eventually, you know, it's important to, I think, to communicate with the residents. Let them know with the about fifty-one ninety-eight. I don't know if they all know about that. I I I'm sure that the the park residents or the park owners, the site managers, I haven't told them about it. And then co-op relationship building. I think co-ops are a great way. Jennifer's done a lot of great work, starting with the Rock Northwest co-op. They've had good success, just, you know, twenty minutes down up I five in 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 Lakewood. That's one that went to co-op earlier this year. So, yeah, and I think that these are really important to preserve. I I came into this, I didn't know anything about. And got, I got to meet the people and talk to them and it's, it's, I feel a lot of pride in helping out the community. the community. Yeah, this job has been, it's been really good. So that's all I have.
Do you wanna just hit the stop, stop share and then we can turn over?
Well, that was, that was basically, you know, my question to just see that. I didn't know how many people had actively requested the rezoning and if that was something that was, you know, being considered.
Yeah, so it was just the one, but um just to clarify that too, is that I think what they're really looking for is park preservation. Really, they wanna make sure, and they want some, probably some other things like rent stabilization and rent control, but you know, but really what they were asking for was rezoning. So we wanted to kind of break it down and say, okay, is rezoning really the best path forward? Um in some parks, it may be because those are the ones that are at the highest risk. For their particular park, it may not be. And so we may have to look at other options to be able to.
Yeah, if they wanna preserve that, keep that rent down, they're gonna have to go with a co-op route. That's the best path for them. And and fifty one ninety eight opens that up for them.
Well, a couple, a couple of comments if I could. I think, what did you find? Well, the rent may be an average of six hundred dollars, they're still purchasing a home. So they're not living there for six hundred dollars. So what were like average home prices? You know, I guess if they own it outright or something, then they're just paying taxes, but I think that's something that, is there any research on on that? Because, well, some of the nicer parks, you know, that's clearly probably a two hundred plus thousand dollar manufactured home versus some of the others maybe are fifty, sixty thousand. But uh so I just, I think that's an important distinction if we're looking at it compared to, say, multifamily housing or other kinds of things that.
Add about a thousand dollars on top of the space rent, you'll get the house. If they don't own the home, that's about where it's at. But all I looked at was the space rent. I I know that's what I, Brian wanted me to focus was the space rent, but I'll tell you, if you just add about a thousand dollars, if they don't own the home, that's about where it's at, cause I know college terrace was sixteen fifty and I think they charged six fifty for the space rent. And that was for a double wide um average condition. And 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 when you talk about the nice area like U Meadows, um the reason why they can charge that amount is because it's all owned by the trades. All those homes aren't bought from like various different manufacturers, it's one manufacturer. So it's quasi subsidized in a way that 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 the trades can can give them six hundred and seventy five dollars a space rent, cause they're getting so much from the the home.
Then what is like the lifespan of these homes? Obviously, some of the nicer ones being more maintained, but as you can see, like some of the pictures you've given, these the lifespan, I'm assuming, is not near the lifespan of like a stick-built home. And I'm wondering how that plays into the long-term strategy of these, you know, and obviously you can pull them out and put a new one in or things like that. And it's a land, but I just, I think that's a really important piece on this that I can't maybe remodel it at the same way I can a stick-built home. And is that creating some costs down the road that we're not considering in some of these? So I just was curious on that.
Yeah, I didn't really, I didn't really get too much of that. Do you have anything on that?
Well, I didn't take a deep dive into that either, but those, I I think that those are all excellent and critical questions.
Yeah, I don't know the averages. I I know that the, a lot of the homes that were built in the early seventies, you can tell they were they were built in the early seventies and I I don't know how they're still, you know, have.
I am so sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just, you know, across some research that I've just, uh just some gray reads, gray research, so articles, journals. You know, it, there's, there's a strong camp that's that suggests that since nineteen seventy six, when um when there were, was more regulation about how these homes were built, that certainly their lifespan is better than it was pre seventy six, right? But our parks are still full of both. We've got, uh and I I do have all of the numbers on that as well, but we've got, you know, anywhere from uh homes that were I didn't see any in the nineteen sixties, but definitely the very early seventies. And then all the way to something new. Now, a brand new home, if you or I were to go and maybe purchase a brand new home, what studies are showing is that compared to something similar stick-built, um energy efficiency um and the integrity with which it's built is really uh very comparable. But what you have to consider or where things become a a real concern is climate. So uh if you were to put one of these homes you know, on a landslide or um in in Florida, you know, or in hurricane uh areas, they are not likely going to withstand the same way that a stick-built home would that's on a solid foundation. So I think that that's one of the areas.
I have another thing, you just reminded me of this, about about the climate. I talked to a lady at Wild, is Wildwood, the one right next to Costco, I think it's Wildwood. And I was talking to her and she's on social security, she's on fixed income, we're talking, and she said that she spent five hundred dollars a month in heating costs in December. And this is for a single wide home, maybe six hundred square feet. I couldn't believe it. There's another thing that's that's really burdensome for these folks is that they're, that that there's no, these homes, there's no insulation. So not only are they, you know, getting hammered by this or that, they don't, their 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 costs for
So the rent just gets them the land that they're sitting on? It doesn't get them water or utilities or anything that's on top of that? So just like, so one other comment, and then I can, I'm sorry if I could, and just and then concede a little bit, but, cause I know other people have questions, but I I concern that like these are not that low of density, they're single-story. Uh oh, they are low density, they're not higher density, they're single-story, they do take a lot of land space. You know, are there other viable options that could maybe get us a two-story more square footage, maybe better insulation for a similar, you know, if we were to consider one of your proposals that was like, you know, city buying, I just wonder if there there are other options that might get us this middle rung affordability without new manufactured homes. Now, I understand preserving and and this, your your presentation was about preserving versus new manufactured home parks. But I think it's kind of a relevant thing that, you know, you do see like a travel trailer on there and them trying to live in a travel trailer. I understand if that's all you can afford and and um and that's something, but there are a lot of extra costs on these that I don't think, I think you kind of need to get to what's the full price they're paying per month versus a singular.
Yeah, yeah. And that was on the, that was on the way forward with the utilities, a deeper dive on the utilities. Because you're, you're right, uh there's more costs than is that rent. And that's something that we need to get at to get the full picture.
And if I could uh jump in a little bit, like you said, it, this is, was all about preserving parks, this this uh this work program. Housing and affordable housing is gonna be a huge discussion point as we move through the comp plan process, based on a number of uh bills that passed the legislature this year that we're gonna have to incorporate into our comp plan. And Sarah Schelling is actually gonna come to a future planning commission meeting to kind of lay out some of that stuff and and what we're gonna be looking at. But to the point here, it it really does, for the first time, require us to uh be a little more thoughtful in our comp plans about planning for and having strategies to develop uh housing that's affordable to a variety of uh incomes. So it, that's gonna be this is just a first step and a lot of work that we're gonna have to do over the next couple of years as part of the comp plan update process. And Ryan, I probably interrupted you because you were gonna say that same thing, right?
Okay, so Mark has a question.
Yeah. First of all, Jennifer and Gordon, great presentations tonight, we really enjoyed them. We've got an introduction to this whole concept when we were doing Affordable Housing Strategy a couple of years ago, so it's been on our minds too. But um one of the things, as far as a course of action, it, what, how could we fit in this resident-owned community concept? Into if 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 um if someone comes along and wants to buy up a a park, could we have it somehow a law or in the zoning that as far as right of first refusal, that we, the city would have the right of first refusal to kind of create a community-owned or a residence-owned community? How does the city encourage and help make those things work? Because uh when the, when they're owning it themselves, my guess is, once all the costs are involved, they've got something pretty close to being fixed on a yearly basis after that, rather than having their rates jacked on them by by someone who owned it.
And they're not for profit anymore.
Right, but is there a way that we can encourage that or or stimulate that?
Yeah, so I'll weigh in on this one is, we we met with resident-owned communities that that rock northwest and they, we we talked to them about how we can have more influence into the process. And and, you know, granted, now we have a state law that we didn't just, you know, hasn't even taken effect, but we don't have it, you know, we hadn't had it before. Um but what, what, when we were talking to the the representative, they were saying, really, um, you know, we can connect owners that want to sell with them. So the way that they get involved is they are not involved in the the private sales of parks between individuals. What it really takes is for a um a very well-meaning park owner that says, hey, I wanna do best by my residents, I wanna sell this, but I wanna leave it to them because I really respect my residents, I wanna do right by them, to get in contact with somebody like Rock Northwest who can purchase it for market rate. And then, you know, eventually turn that into a, a help, turn that, get that turned into a cooperative. Um and so I think what we can do is, it's not, probably not so much through rules and regulations, because now those regulations will exist, and we can see how the state law has worked, you know, we can analyze that over the next couple of years. But really getting connections built between park owners and the 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 people that can start the the resident-owned community is part of that. Um and I, we've already, Gordon's met him and I already know some of them, that hey, I think some of these people would be a great fit when they're ready to, you know, cash out, they're they're local people that would wanna do right by their residents, we can get them definitely connected.
Who would finance that? Where would, where would the the money come for something like?
I was just gonna ask, cause I know Jennifer had on one of her slides, that one in Colorado where the city like, that seemed like doing a deeper dive on something like that, a program that the city sets up where they do some kind of zero interest. You know.
So when we talk to Victoria, do I talk about that?
Yeah, so again, we had a really uh nice uh meeting with Victoria Banyan, uh who's from our local rock. Here in Washington State, Washington and Idaho. Um and she was, uh she was incredibly, you know, informative on a lot of these questions that we had. I lost my train of thought, Ryan, can you bring me back to the question? Thank you, I apologize. Um so, she explained that funding comes from multiple sources. One of them, one of those sources is their own capital. Um another one is partnerships that they have developed with uh certain banks that are funding these things at a very low rate. Um so there's that. And then they also seek grant money, much like uh the cities or, you know, any other agency might do. So um they do have sources of capital to work with and.
It seemed like that the um, it wasn't that they needed more money. It seemed like she was, she was telling us that, you know, they have multiple funds available that they stack together to create a funding package to purchase these.
You just need the expertise to pull it all together.
Yeah, yeah, and and they are, I mean, I I don't know if there are other cooperatives, I kind of get the impression that they're really the only game in town. You know, of of folks that are putting these together. Uh but they're, they're extremely powerful in terms of um you know, giving, giving their residents an equity stake in in the community. In fact, to the point of, she was talking about one park where they'd, they'd pushed the space rent down so low that it was actually pushing up the cost of the unit to buy them on the open market. So for example, you know, you had a a home that might have sold for fifty thousand dollars in a market rate, you know, park. Well, their their monthly cost was so low that that fifty thousand dollars was like seventy five thousand dollars because they were making it up on the back end because their their space rent was so low. So it actually injected value into people's units.
Interesting unintended consequences.
Yeah, so, you know.
Thank you.
Jennifer, did you say, I I thought I heard you say that when a a an owner gives the first right of refusal to the park, the park has seven days to.
Sixty, I believe.
Seventy, seven, seven.
Seventy.
Seven zero, thank you for clarifying, yes.
Not a week.
Right, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a big ask, right? And um you know, one of the things too that Victoria uh really uh drove home for us was um you, you remember probably that I mentioned that they provide ten years of active um resources once they establish these communities. And one of the things she really talked about was being really sensitive to, again, the demographic, which there, there is likely to be a large gap in education and uh and knowledge about how to manage things. And I think that I heard the term, the word consequence over here, whether consequences are positive or not so positive, they do exist on all sides of the issue, right? So um I think that another task is we take, you know, uh deeper dives into what we're working with here is to um identify potential risks uh outside of you know, the issue of preservation. Well, what might be the risk to the city? What could be the risk to? And I think that those are are questions that are fair that uh that we need to, you know, that we need to ask and find answers to.
Yeah, the cost to the city or the county or the state goes up enormously if these people are pushed out of their homes. Then it gets really expensive.
And it gets really expensive.
It's all about optics, you know.
Um I hear the financial literacy piece, and that's huge. But you made me think of something that I didn't recognize, there could be a language barrier in some of these communities. Do you think that's accounted for in the support? You know, that's an excellent question.
If if they the state bill and
No, I mean, there's, there's a concentration of folks that English isn't their first language. That's, that's a bridge you have to cross to get to financial literacy and these other things.
I know that I'm taking a complete guess at this and I shouldn't do so, but my, my gut tells me that Rock has that within their, you know, full package because they've been doing this for so many years that um I'm sure that they have translators on staff. And I might not be answering that question in full. But as far as the language barrier in in and of itself, um I would assume so, but I will find out, yeah.
Wanting to accomplish the purchase, do they have to have a hundred percent of the homeowners buy-in or do they have to?
So no, that's an excellent question. Um and Gordon may take this one over because I'm still wrapping my mind around that process just a little bit. But so collectively, the entire uh property, the entire mobile home park would become resident-owned. However, as a resident, uh I may choose to not buy into the co-op. I guess I liken it to like being a member of a union, you can be a dues-paying member or a non-due-spaying member. And so I'm still, I myself just still trying to uh understand what all of that means, so there will be more reports on that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're new into the co-op game, to be honest.
But that's an excellent question. And so my limited uh knowledge on that at this time is that, no, they are not forced by any means to be there is an initial buy-in, there's initial buy-in to be part of that co-op. Uh Victoria reported that typically that's anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars one-time fee to to be a dues-paying member.
Yeah, for example, I don't know if you guys were here earlier, but the 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 yacht club, the end, playin' yacht club, they they pay like two thousand, twenty-four hundred a year or something like that for space rent.
They pay what?
Twenty-four hundred a year, two thousand four hundred a year.
A version of the, of a co-op.
Yeah, it's a version, it's a, it is a co-op.
But you have to own a, an airstream.
Yeah, you have to own an airstream and attend one convention a year.
It's a unique, it's it's a little bit different than the
Affordable Housing.
I love the spectrum that we cover here.
We actually rented their, my bridge, I rented their community hall at Cubs for our tournaments, that place is amazing when you drive around. You talking about the auditorium they're in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The stage and the whole building.
So if we were to do like uh the COA, the rezoning, could we ethically say we would agree to rezone these parks, but not maybe these parks? Because, you know, some of these that are in poorer condition, it just, you know, I I think, you know, so I don't know if like, from a city's perspective, is that
So you say that sends, it sends the wrong message. We care about you, but not you.
Yeah, can we be that judgy? And I just, that makes me feel a little uncomfortable.
I didn't even think about that, that's a great criteria, right?
If you meet the following.
Yeah, it's just like
And and this is a great discussion.
And it might be messaging because you're not, it's not about the people, it's about the buildings and and unfortunately, you know, people live in those buildings, but it's not about the people, they're not any less important. You have to message that somehow.
If your criteria are who's most at risk, then that's a different
Right, that's exactly right.
Threshold.
Because that's really what we're talking about, you know, like all the things about how much it costs to heat it and the condition of it. I mean, that's all important, but that's secondary to the fact that if you have to rehouse these people that suddenly have nowhere to live, you know. So making sure that the park continues to exist has gotta be the
But all you need is someone on the end that you didn't.
Cover yourself.
Another way we could look at this too, is, you know, so so rezoning is one tool, but then there's also regulations related to displacement, and so the other thing we could look at is for those parks that are maybe at the the biggest risk of being converted, is to say, hey, if if you are displacing people, you need to provide funds for those, there's some state laws that that do have that, they're not very well-funded, you know, that's something that the city could look at, you know, potentially a pot of money that would help. Another way is to actually require that if you're gonna displace a hundred people in a mobile home park with a, you know, two hundred unit apartment, hundred of those units, you need to, you know, account for that, so you need to allow for a hundred of those people to be able to, you know, come back and live there and have that be affordable, so there's.
Affordable living.
Yeah, so there there's options, and then, you know, it, because I, you know, and it's not so pronounced in the city as it is in the urban growth area, especially some of the parks on Martin Way, where it's like, is that the best use of that property, probably not? And or is that the best place for those people to live forever and ever, and like Daphne's, like, doesn't this have a life cycle where the building is just gonna, you know, have an endpoint, yeah, it will, and so, you know, we need to be planning for what are those, how do those properties transition into a a long-term sustainable living situation for the people that are there, and not not just, you know, allow it to move into another land use, and then, you know, where the.
There's so many, oh, excuse me, some of them are historically in places that aren't necessarily, like you're saying, a good use of that land, so, you know, I think you have to build in the new Mobile Home Parks, part of this discussion, because maybe they would, you know, these people would be better placed someplace else. I know you don't, you can, you can just pick them up, but it's not, it's not cheap to do so, and, but, you know, that's the whole point, but, I don't know, I think that has to be built into it, because some of them are just in the wrong place, just because they've been there for four decades.
The ones on Martin Way, they were like the, if you look at the assessment, they've been there the longest, and everything grew up around them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was curious if the UGA, the Mobile Home Parks, could those even, could we even rezone them, or is that something that the county would have to do?
We would have to do that through joint planning with Thurston County to be able to do that, so, yeah, you're correct, so that's, you know, in order for us to truly control the land use and the, you know, any incentives and those kinds of things, we we really have to be dealing with people that are in the city limits. Because, you know, it'd be difficult for us to do that stuff outside of our our jurisdiction, we'd have limited means to be able to do that.
So, I'm gonna interject that, this is the tip of a very big iceberg, okay? And we're all gonna leave here and not feel like we've had all of our questions answered, because we're just gonna have more and more questions. So, I'm gonna say, time to stop discussion on this topic this evening. Thank you all for your great input, great presentation.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you.
Definitely worth some well-spent time to really dig deeper into this. So I'm sure Ryan heard that dig deeper statement I made. And we can look forward to, I think, getting an opportunity to talk more.
Oh, yes.
About this issue, I think it's really important. When I drive by the ones on Martin, particularly the ones that are kind of by before the lumberyard, and I I can't even imagine people living in those, so so there's better answers, and and, you know, I'm I'm not sure, you know, I've been doing this for years. But this is a great opportunity, maybe to come up with some great, great ideas, so. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Any communications and announcements that we need to do? Our next meeting is June twentieth. And we are returned.
You have your gavel?
They don't wanna give me any.
Thank you, everybody.
Are we ever getting together with the county? Are we ever getting together with the county?
That that's on the county's schedule, I I don't know.
The Board of Commissioners has a a joint meeting with our city council scheduled for the twenty-second.
Oh, okay. I keep thinking that I'll be be putting on my iPad sooner and figure out if there's gonna be something that.
Yeah, exactly, nothing yet, so stay tuned. So if I'll let you do this now, so just if that.